All right, Carroll County Courts, round 10 session, Carroll County Court, we're deciding for the main session, Carroll, if you would please come in standing for invitation, Mr. Gregory and I pledge to America's flag, I'm speaking for Let us honor him.
Father, I will just thank you for another day that you blessed us with. I pray for all the people in our community, especially the badly injured and recovering residents. I pray that you look to your arms, ready and with your family, confident in these times. Father, I pray that all citizens may deny that for the better of our community, and I am so thankful to live in this great community. I pray that there will be your best side, Charles, as we wait tonight. I do not.
I pray that the allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. We'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the county commission. We would like to ask you to please socially distance as much as you can, if you have masks please wear, uh, it would be greatly appreciated. Glad to see this crowd here with us tonight. First item of amendments on our agenda is our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mary Lee Appleton, here. Mary Ann Baker, here. Anne Love Mather, here. Dana Burke, here. Gary Clarence, here. Coy Dickey, Coy Dickey, here. Phil Burton, here. Peter Ford, here. Bo Gregor, here. Landon Dully, here. Richard Martin, here. Watson, here. Linda Johnson, here. Richard Johnson, here. Rachel Jones, here. David Donner, here. Amber Russell, here. Barry Walsh, here. Steve Cook, here.
Thanks for all our agenda would be the approval of amendments from September twenty-eighth meeting, made up in distributed to you, are there any corrections, additions, or additions to the amendment? Any corrections? Claire, you have a motion to approve by Mr. Claire, your second by this favor. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is done. Next would be, uh, announcements, uh, we have just a few announcements. Grand jury report, uh, has been received on condition of the jail, and noted, uh, I think they've also requested some training on, uh, their, their roles in that, uh, part which we're trying to put together for them. Also, the, we'd like for you to make notes that the steering committee typically is the first Tuesday of the month, and since that is election day, we've already moved it on the calendar to that Thursday, which will be the fifth. That will be November the fifth instead of the third. So, might make you note that. Uh, are there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Okay. Next we'll move into, uh, approval of the agenda. Uh, as far as any amendments to the agenda, I think we have, uh, two more notaries. You would like to go I and B notaries. We have Anita Sullivan and Tina Stafford, both from Edson and Motors. Tina Stafford and Anita Sullivan, handouts to the other two, so we can do it. Any other, any other additions to the agenda, corrections, things I may repeat?
No, sir.
Any, I need to lash them to you all three. Okay. Anything to motion to set the agenda?
To set the agenda as a matter.
You have a motion to set the agenda, as amended, Mr. Farge and Mr. Johnson, correct the second amendment. Mr. Richard Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our agenda is set. Next item will be the citizen's response to agenda items. If you think you'd like to speak to the commission on that's a matter that's on this month's agenda, we would ask that you come up and see the mayor's signing sheet, and give us your name and what it is that you'd like to speak to, so that we can call on you when we get to that part of the agenda. There is also, at the end of our meeting, we also allow a time for public comments prior to closing the meeting. But if there's something on the agenda that you would like to speak to, please come up and sign in at this time. Okay? See anybody?
We did have one person sign in before the meeting started, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, who, who, how many do we have?
Uh, just one person.
Just one, okay. Any more?
Somebody had a second.
All right, move on. Anyone here? We have all three, and they're speaking for us.
They're all speaking on the issue of the fire sprinklers and residences.
Okay. We'd like to let you know that according to the rules of this, this body, members of the public may address the commission, call matters on the adopted agenda, first signing in with their names, and then agenda item. Uh, we will limit the amount of time allocated to speak since there's only three people, no more than five minutes. Uh, we do ask that you address the commission when they're speaking, uh, not the audience. Uh, you will be given an opportunity to answer questions by any of the, uh, members of the body, not the audience. Uh, you would remain standing at the podium which is through speaking, in case any of the, uh, commissioners have a question for you before we just miss you back to the seat. Uh, you're not going to get into, uh, an argument, or a discussion, or a debate. Uh, we want you to speak what's in your heart, that you want the commission to hear on the issue at hand, and they will be given the, uh, opportunity to ask you questions. Uh, it's not an opportunity for you to ask any questions. Uh, any questions about, did everybody understand that? Okay. We will call on you when we get to that particular, uh, part of the, of the agenda. All right. Next up, county mayor report. Mayor Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have just a few items on here tonight. Uh, the last county commission meeting, there was a question about when the census end date was, and that ended on October fifteenth. Uh, by federal law, they're supposed to have the results of the census submitted to the states by April first, so they can start redistricting. Uh, the second item is, uh, the position of fire chief has been posted in the last two editions of the bylaws, the application period for that will close at noon, this third day, October fifteenth. So that would meet the two-week requirement for advertising and required for personnel policy. Our current date for doing interviews for that position is November fifth, but the backup date will be November sixth, if we need to do two days of interviews. And then, November fifteenth and sixteenth, if there's not enough interviewers, or that doesn't meet with the applicant's schedule. As you've seen, downstairs in the courthouse, we're still doing repairs, and we had the water damage. Uh, we did go ahead and remove all the floor, and some of the old linings still under there, as twenty percent has business, we wouldn't be able to remove that, some path to floor was taken up already. We will be replacing that with pre-finished fir wood, and that was going to be delivered today, actually we set it off until tomorrow, because when that's delivered, the courthouse will very much be inaccessible for all materials downstairs. The last item on the streetscape, should be doing landscaping. Uh, the last date I was given for a start to do that was the second week of November, still trying to confirm that, it might be a little bit delayed on that, but right now the current date I was given should start second week of November. Uh, my office due to lease some guidelines for trick-or-treating this Halloween, I want to make sure that everyone understands these aren't just suggestions, these are not going to be enforced by law enforcement or anyone else, but I would strongly suggest people follow those guidelines, and they've pretty much probably been doing already, social distance, wearing masks, if there's nobody within six feet, and as long as we follow those guidelines, I think we'll have a pretty safe and hopefully enjoyable Halloween this year. Uh, we did apply, we're in the process of applying for the two thousand twenty multi-mole grant, this is to put sidewalks from where the street state project ended on Broadway up to the intersection of Maberry and Broadway. Uh, our art field coordinator did come with an engineer and looked at the project area of, so they've come up with a budget estimate submitted this, initial calculation looking at it, the engineer thought this project would meet the cap for the multi-mole grant, which is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of that amount, five percent will be the responsibility of the counties, over and over fifty thousand. If we do, if we do get awarded that grant, and I think it's maybe if at this point, I think more than likely what will happen is it'll be divided into phases, and the first phase will probably be doing the engineering of that project, and then submit for a second round, but that should be the construction costs. But again, this is very competitive grant, and it's one of the ones people go after every year, so it'll be very competitive, and I just want to stress to everyone that this is, it's certainly not a certainty, it isn't big if, it's very, very competitive. On October sixteenth, I had a meeting with some representatives of the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the team was leading to discuss how we can start doing some improvements down there. Basically, what they're doing in that area is, is that they're going to be willing to release that area to the county, they're rolling in the leases we've had previously for second tree, pine cove, and the access area off of Lot Six Road. They would then come in to us to maintain that property, at least in its current condition, we can also improve it going forward with some things that meet the course of requirements, some thinking of the walking trails, they were receptive to maybe doing some different campsites at first, or maybe moving into army campsites and doing other things like that. They did stress that as long as it's somewhat recreational oriented, that they would be willing to entertain options for improving that property. So it was a very productive meeting, and I want to bring to the commission, we're actually going in front of the Parks and Recreation Committee this Thursday at six o'clock, at the community center to discuss that verb. And last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to recognize Dr. Jerry Faulkner, the president of Volunteer State, he's here to speak on the resolution, uh, honoring all state for the fiftieth anniversary, I was calling to make sure that I recognize the dignitary man here tonight, and it's Dr. Jerry Faulkner, and I want to thank you for coming to speak on that resolution. I would ask that when we get to that resolution, you'd be allowed to speak on that?
Definitely not.
That's my report for this evening, I'll be willing to answer any questions if the commissioners have anything to say.
Any questions, commission?
Mr. Chairman, the saddle, as you walk up to the main street, the high, top of the desert. Do you have a boat in the lane that you can do the saddle off?
It should all be currently within the highway, right of way, that is Highway one forty-one, we call it, we call it Broadway, but it is actually State Route one forty-one. Everything where the saddle must go should currently be in the right of way for the state.
Good question. Ms. Jones?
I'd like some beach, but did we turn the light what we had, what we had hanging on?
Yes, we did get a new, uh, as you've, if you've been there since, we did repaving everything at the intersection of Maberry and Broadway, they did put a short level of turning lane over there, I think we can thank Senator Hale for getting that through, that has helped a little bit, I've seen it in action here recently. That is, hopefully that's, that's a step in the right direction, that intersection is scheduled to go out for bid, to improve that, and actually have turning lanes on the west side and on the north side, so you'll have the turning lane on the, on the Halltown Road, and then on the west side of the intersection should be turning lanes as well as green arrows and turn signal and all that stuff is part of that project. And the last thing I have is it's scheduled to go out to bid in the fall next year.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll move into committee reports. I have indicated the ones that I know have met this one. Uh, first, steering, steering committee met on October the sixth, at six o'clock, at the fifty center. Uh, we reviewed the minutes and approved the minutes from September first. Elected few officers for that committee, they remain the same, myself as chair, Mr. Ford as vice chair, Ms. Atwood the secretary. We discussed, uh, the windows in the courthouse, the mayor had requested, had emphasized the BNRC that we need a study of, uh, historical, uh, aspects of the courthouse, so that was sent back to the building committee for their consideration. Uh, ordinance for residential codes, uh, was sent to the codes and zoning committee, and the, uh, courthouse flooring was discussed and decided to go with the, uh, type of flooring much like we have up here in the courtroom, would be much more period, uh, like the period type flooring of the courthouse originally, hopefully. Um, we also have the, uh, resolution to commit funds to the planning office, uh, specifically to that office, instead of going into the general fund, that was sent to the codes and zoning committee, and the building, and, uh, budget finance committee, I'm sorry. Um, we did go over the budget amendments, all the budget amendments were recommended that are on the agenda tonight, and we discussed the, uh, the agenda for tonight. There was a few changes, I think, to some of the appointments, uh, from what we originally gave, given, and we'll go over those at the proper time. Um, I think everything else, uh, has been discussed, we'll be on the agenda tonight. We did talk about moving, and that's where we decided to move the November meeting to the fifth. Okay? Mr. Chairman. Budget finance committee met on October the nineteenth. Uh, we did approve the meeting of the minutes of the previous meeting, and we elected officers to stay, uh, the same as the current officer, Mr. Chairman, myself, Vice Chairman, Mr. Ford, secretary, and Ms. Jones. Uh, we did go over county financial summary and trustee report. Uh, there was no major anomalies or concerns noted or talked about, everything seemed to be in line. Uh, property taxes are just now beginning to come in, so it's a little hard to really evaluate that until you start getting that on the revenue side. Expenses look in line, and, uh, most things look about as expected. Uh, we did receive that before it was approved. Uh, we did get into the budget amendments that are all presented for you tonight, and, uh, we talked about the courthouse flooring, uh, we will be receiving money, insurance monies, it shows a couple of cost of this, uh, actually there may be actually some additional monies left over that we could use for some other necessary renovations in the courthouse. Uh, that was budget finance. Codes and zoning enforcement met on October sixth. Mr. Paul Goller?
I'm sorry. Code and zoning committee, October sixth, I made this call to discuss mainly the ICC codes, uh, for the next two months, which we've got, I don't know if you're going to get it right, uh, we made a good approval of minutes first, uh, given the approval of minutes, and did vote to keep the, uh, all the officers in that committee as work, myself as chair, Mr. Whitaker as co-chair, Vice Chair, and Mr. John Oliver as the secretary of that committee. So from that going forward, uh, this is the second meeting, if we had a chance to inspect the third meeting, if we had a chance to discuss, uh, some of the codes, uh, in October, when it's September, uh, commission, we will be, uh, we brought the ICC codes for commercial all good, and the residential back to code, and that was approved there. Uh, so here in this meeting, we focused on the residential code, which is, uh, I'm sure a lot of us have a little bit of a hot opportunity to hear from a lot of us to go with it. So, um, as we're looking at this, we brought to the board, which was saying, maybe they brought, had brought, and had ordinance, which, uh, he brought the ordinance as the state, I think, I think it was, uh, pardon my score, Mr. Chairman, please, and he, uh, he brought it as the state had approved, added a couple of, uh, penalties, there, oh, penalties, there we go, I apologize for that part, a couple of penalties that he felt necessary to give him, some, some grass, some more siding, I think he, he asked, uh, gas, fire because one of those sizes he really needed, a couple of penalties to wrap, otherwise it was exactly, as what he brought the rules to, what the state had approved for the county to do, uh, in that meeting during that meeting, it was quite a good discussion, uh, the fact that the state provided a good exclusion of the fire sprinklers that's been within residential pieces, uh, there was a lot of discussion in that, and where, where, uh, the members were teaching people, whether they have, uh, we had the, uh, rock floor that we had a meeting, uh, we had a paper with the, uh, fire sprinkler display, all those pieces, a lot of discussion on that topic, a lot of discussion towards that topic, which I'm sure you'll probably be able to get a knife, I think, if you're in this park, but in that meeting, as we continue along the way, it was brought, uh, to a, uh, though, Mr. Jewel brought a, uh, brought it as a, uh, as a motion that we, uh, would bring this to the committee, the full committee, and not to look into the, uh, fire sprinklers system, I believe that was secondly known as a portion, I'm not saying that. But, uh, as we go forward in this case, um, that was brought, uh, the, uh, vote, uh, it was almost unanimous, it had about two noes in the committee, on the rest, uh, that committee was, was against the vote. Uh, it's pretty much that's what we said in that committee, that's what we said here this morning. Now you look, I'm sorry, people will have a committee, coming on in over there, we've got to get a time here, because this is, this is, this is.
Chair, we said today, we didn't, we'll talk to you later. Next, economic development committee, we have a hot topic thirteen, Mr. Clark.
Pass the, uh, economic development committee, it will be October thirteenth. Uh, we started out with the election of officers, and a motion was made to keep the officers that we had that had carried, the officers being myself as chair, Vice Chair Amber Russell, and Secretary Seth Thurman. Then we, uh, moved on and had an update from the economic development strategic planning meeting, from which various members of the EC, ECD committee who attended, one of PPA's economic recruiting programs, uh, Mr. Dan Tinkham from the Tennessee Central Economic Alliance, uh, facilitated and completed this on October first. Uh, we looked over the list, it was, it was comprehensive, and looked to be a good place to move forward, uh, from, and the final draft would be forthcoming. Uh, then we, uh, Mayor Chambers gave us an update on the retail academy two oh one, that they're participating in, some, uh, progress has been made, there are additional progress that's also been made with the industrial development board, who made these, their funds, helped finance a retail study, and partner with retail strategies to help spur the business and the arts for crowds to count. Thank you, sir.
Next, education committee, uh, the quarterly meeting met on October the twelfth. Uh, minutes from the seven three meeting were approved, we elected officers, myself as chair, Mr. Ford as vice chair, and a new secretary, Ms. Linda Johnson. Uh, we, under all business, talked about the middle school roof project, how it was, uh, progressing, we were informed that the school board would like to go ahead and do the roof of the gymnasium, as well as the other part of the school. Gymnasium roof was not originally in plan, it didn't feel like it needed to be, uh, they discovered when working on the other roofs, possible watering filtration coming from that roof system through the walls into the rest of the school. So the school board is going to use, uh, the funds, it probably means that all contingency funds will be used for this, and they are not asking us for any more funds for this project, we're going to use the funds that were already allocated for the roof project to do. Uh, we made it absolutely clear that we were not going to approve more funds for this project, but that we were okay with, uh, using the funds that were previously approved for it in its entirety. So, uh, Mr. Dr. Satafield was going to be out of town tonight, so, uh, we are going to have his report next month, or, uh, so if I did not have him on the court report tonight, he will give us that report next month. And, uh, I believe that was all of the county on education, did I miss anything?
Building.
Um, I mean, education. Oh, so that's hit the building, the county building?
Yes, uh, we met on October the thirteenth, we started with the election of officers, there was a motion made to keep the officers, retaining the ones that we had, uh, I was elect as chair, Steve Whitaker, Vice Chair, and John Oliver as secretary. Then we moved into all business, the mayor upgraded the committee on the county's building handicap accessibility, and, uh, there've been progress made in this, in this area. They, we went on to talk about the streetscape, uh, uh, the landscaping will be finished in November, as this is a good time to plant trees and shrubs. Uh, Mayor Chambers also updated the committee on the county's properties that need to be sold. Uh, in deep business, uh, we talked about the courthouse, we're waiting a historical assessment survey, which will, uh, make recommendations on the windows, and, uh, then we talked about floors and the foyer of the courthouse, and a motion was made and carried to replace the floors with, uh, real hardwood, to, to look like they, more like they were originally look. Uh, in other business, we discussed the extension service office, it appears that the deed to that property was never re-recorded following the courthouse fire in nineteen oh four. So that property has, uh, that the school board will, will then file a deed, and then sign the property over to the county. Uh, we also discussed the burning of the, um, house up here above the post office, uh, it's a possibility for the entire apartment to finish burning it down as a training exercise. And we've also talked about, uh, the county, uh, just tearing it down and hauling it off, and, and, uh, I think it had some problems with the equipment, but hopefully that will be accomplished, if not, maybe we could...
If not, maybe we can, uh, get rid of that, uh, burnt house, but with possible, uh, maybe fire burning exercise. The, uh, committee agreed that the property will sell when it's cleaned up, as it is one of the properties that the county has taken back for tax. And we also agree that it would look good for the county to maintain its own derelict properties, uh, before asking people in town to clean up their property. Thank you, sir. Parks and Rec will meet this Thursday at six o'clock, twenty nine. Prison relations, we have October fifteenth. It's over.
We met at seven o'clock, October fifteenth. Uh, we made a local call, declared we had a call, we've been committed to June eighth, I think, to approve the lead officers. Someone made a motion to the lead officers as a word. I was elected Chair, Shane Burton, Vice Chair, Commissioner Baker, Secretary, and that we're doing the business. Ryan Bird, the warden, has leaked a report as telling what the prison is doing, it's a company, that thing is under control now, they did have, I think it says zero cases, uh, for humans. And, uh, still talking about being considerably understaffed to the most, or still needs a little bit of, uh, big thing to do, a big, 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 big challenge here. But, uh, the prison seems to be kind of looking good, as far as we can tell. I know personally, I haven't seen anything, but he's been around it right there, that's a good sign right there. We can adjourn, certainly, too.
Purposing, I will slide off a couple of lines, thank you, Mr. Ford.
About three, October nine two. We met prior to the question, by this meeting. Uh, we did minutes, approved them, we went over, they, uh, elected the officers, they're against, they made a motion, we didn't have the word. I was elected Chair, Shane Burton was elected, uh, Vice Chair, Commissioner Joseph Jones was elected as Secretary. And we went over the, all the hours, and we went over half thousand hours, and over more, we did a list of order, didn't we? And, uh, we intayed, I hope, uh, we, we intayed, it was okay, uh, it was a perk of the community, so.
Thought twice, never October twentieth, yeah. Thank you, sir. Are there any other the four committees that we all would love to meet up?
I was, uh, correct to add, I mean, uh, this, uh, this vote, I know I said it part of the session, uh, you know, we don't, uh, touch Mr. Uh, I would back your support, this is for having great transparency. I, I apologize, I, uh, I'm a question of the education, I'm just, uh, just to be honest.
There's a lot of people who, uh, it's good to meet you, it's a pleasure to meet you. We want them, and the insurance committee, no further to be added. There will be an insurance committee meeting in the center of the theater. At seven, seven o'clock. Last red head for the stadium meeting. Mr. Mall?
Yes, uh, I was, uh, I'm hoping to do things, they were meeting at six o'clock, it's not on here, we'd like to hear from that, you know.
What, what was it?
That's the meeting, we elected officers, we hear the one side.
Any other committee, it may not, if things are, that is correct, sorry, missed that.
Uh, I'm not sure about the report, I didn't prepare the report, I did not prepare it. It was the prepared report due to the fact that we, offering and collecting officers, there was a conversation about a, a document that was moving. However, that document was unsigned, based on, uh, attorney's, uh, view of it, we cannot have, uh, move, move it further than this. And I'm not sure what you're about to, to develop, or I really want to issue, I'm not, I'm not so sure whether that gets me involved, uh, if it reports here or if it doesn't, we are, to be honest with you, it's, uh, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Should have been minutes.
Should be minutes for me.
I, I, I didn't have a team, unless I missed it, I had to. And I just said I have a statement, I don't have a defense. That's great, not gonna help, that, thank you very much. There's a river one's being like, not, there's no officers like.
We, we, we're gonna have some people leaving that committee and seeing when it's coming out, I'd like to be there to not elect officers until we had the full committee meeting.
There were two in one spot, that's right.
At that time, I believe that's correct.
Five, please.
No, some of them are being appointed, uh, they basically just want all of the.
Okay, that, that's fine, it really, you get in a form, original, no business other than deciding there wasn't any business, I hate to put it that way, but that's efficient. I would go ahead and try to report the minutes, and turn again, even if there was no business, that there was a meeting and stuff.
I did, two minutes, and I just, uh, just said that, exactly, I knew you said it.
Wrong.
That no action was taken, you must have done, actually, please.
Any others?
I, I was, is that leading over to here, is that, I don't know, player? That's a good question.
I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. Veller on this one, my understanding is, that way it is a committee, it is set up under state law, not directly with county commission. So it is part of my state law, saying this, like we have water utility board or something like that, so it kind of exists outside. The commission is just, the statute requires that some of the members be condition members. It also requires one of them be a member of another board or commission or committee that's under the state, under the county government, it also requires a full constitutional officer.
That's much like our boards, uh, some of the other things we have, planning commission boards, own fields, equalization board, that are required by statutes, but are not a function of our county commission.
On the one hand, others, it was, wanna be one of the outside also, it's gonna be the law enforcement that get the part of it. They want to be part of that, once everybody's got a bunch of issues.
And we, we have that last, we're going to do it after that. And any others, that answer questions, Tom? Any other committee? Yes, is that?
How many are on your co-doing meetings?
Now, I don't know.
So seven, probably four, maybe one.
I have, I wish you this, whatever. Okay, anything else? We'll move into active business. First, item of business is appointment, something that we were talking about, the ethics review board. This is for a one-year term, which is appointed by the mayor. The name he has submitted to us for tonight is Landon Gully, Commissioner Landon Sue Johnson, Freedom Formal, Sheriff Ray Russell, and Commissioner Steve Whitaker. Those will be the five that will be appointed to the ethics review board. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Also, I guess we need to take a motion to approve those. Mr. Ford makes a motion to approve. Mr. Greg, your second. Any further discussion about this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It does carry. Next is appointments to the planning commission, we have one vacant in the planning commission. Uh, Mr. Rod Owen decided not to go back on the planning commission and the mayor has submitted to us, Mayor, Commissioner Marion Baker, assumes to the boss position on the planning commission. Mr. Greg, motion to approve, second by Mr. Park. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is none. Next, emergency communications board, the nine one one board. This is for a four-year term. All of these are reappointments, uh, Jimmy Anthony, Bill Stroh, and Tracy Belcher. And these will leave for a four-year term, expiring in twenty twenty four. We have a motion to approve, second by Mr. Ford. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Ford, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is none. Next, we'll move into resolutions. First resolution, your consideration tonight is twenty twenty dash twenty three six ninety eight. This is a resolution to add Ray Lane to the official road name list, this is not a maintained road. This is essentially naming this private drive for emergency services purposes. This was sent forward from the nine one one board and, uh, they meant to approve this on October thirteenth. This is located on Harper Ranch Road, uh, about one point three miles up Dixon, north of Dixon Creek Road, that's very, uh, improper. Currently, there are three dwellings on this one driveway, which you know are to, uh, avoid confusion, so it will have been named and assigned to the addresses. Uh, border rail, I believe. Any other question? Motion to approve. Mr. Gully makes a motion, Mr. Johnson, ladies and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does carry. Next, is resolution twenty 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 four six ninety nine. This is a resolution to add Nix Lane, N I X Lane, to the official road name list for emergency services identification. This is located west of Long Grove Road, one point six two five miles north of Highway twenty five. And beyond the left is one at Long Grove Road, currently, there is a house there, another house under construction, and also a shop building. So there's three structures that need to be numbered off of that road. This is sent forward also from emergency communication board for October thirteenth meeting. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Russell?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Russell? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is none. Next, your consideration is resolution twenty 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 five seven hundred. This is a resolution of the county commission in recognizing the fiftieth anniversary of Ball State Community College. We're delighted to have Dr. Fox with us tonight, and we'd like to invite him to say a few words to us about the fiftieth anniversary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the base student mayor, so pleased to be with you this evening, appreciate, uh, this impending action to acknowledge the fiftieth anniversary of Volunteer State Community College serving Northwood in Tennessee. Uh, we had a little bit of trouble deciding when to celebrate our anniversary. June is nineteen sixty nine, the higher education commission in their regular meeting approved the location of the community college. Uh, November of nineteen seventy had groundbreaking on a national pipe at our current location. First classes were held in nineteen seventy one, although not at the location because the buildings weren't finished. The offices for the college were in the Cordell Hole Building on the Main Street Galatin. The classes were held in the National Guard Armory, and pretty much every church on Main Street Galatin. So, we just decided we'll celebrate our fiftieth anniversary for about three years. And so we're launching, and so we're launching that. We're so pleased to be part of this area and to serve the citizens of Northwood, Tennessee, including, uh, including Trousdale County. Um, gathering up some information, there are over three hundred graduates of Ballier State Community College that call Trousdale County their home, including their illustrious mayor, is one of our alumni as well. So we appreciate so much the opportunity to provide education to the citizens of Trousdale County. Uh, I'm a little disappointed, my buddy, Dr. Satafield is not here, he and I work together.
Dr. Fox, I am here, it's good to see you.
Good to see you. Yeah, he was in my blind spot back there, so. Uh, Dr. Clint and I work together quite a lot to provide educational opportunities, school enrollment opportunities for the high school students here in Trousdale County. And we continue to look for ways to be of service, um, in addition to our college credit classes. This past year, we offered three hundred thousand hours of workforce development, uh, opportunities on our non-credit side of the house. And so, as I listened to your report from the prison committee, this, uh, past spring, uh, we had discussions, past summer, had discussions with core city about how we could bring college classes to the prison system for the incarcerated people here, in her, in hopes of, uh, cutting down on the recidivism rate. So again, just so honored to be with you and, and appreciate your acknowledgement of our fiftieth anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, for your consideration, resolution twenty 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 five seven hundred, and it is just an honor recognizing Volunteer State Community College on their fiftieth anniversary. Ms. Baker, have a motion to approve, Ms. Johnson, have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is none. They have been a big part of our community, even though they're in another, another county, we, we feel like they're ours as much, I think, despite the doubt, but we do appreciate you. Next is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty six seven one. This is a resolution declaring some, uh, equipment, certain equipment that is exposed as surplus to be disposed of. These are a couple of trucks that are in the sheriff's department. They're gonna post them for auction on govdeal.com. Any question on this?
Same motion to approve.
No motion to approve. Ms. Johnson, have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is none. Next, we'll move into ordinances. Word of explanation of ordinances. Word of explanation of ordinances. We have a first reading. Then we have a subsequent, if it passes on the first reading, a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to speak prior to the second reading. So an ordinance, a resolution passes on one reading, an ordinance requires a two-minute public hearing, just as a word of explanation. So even if this ordinance passes tonight, what form this ordinance passes tonight, it has not passed. It passed tonight. It will be backed up for a public hearing and a second reading next month. First ordinance we have for first reading is ordinance two oh six twenty twenty dash twenty-one. This is an ordinance to adopt certain of the International Residential Codes. This being the twenty eighteen addition of the International Residential Code. This was put forth. The state requires us to update our code addition regularly. I believe you have to do within five years, six years, five years of the current code adoption. And we're currently on the twenty twelve, so if we need to update it, jumping from, jumping over twenty fifteen into the twenty eighteen. And we waited until we saw what the state was going to adopt. And they adopted the twenty eighteen. And all the things that they gave us the option on to take out or stay on further older code additions, such as the energy codes in two thousand nine, we're staying with that. This will mirror the state adoption with the exception of fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers in residential are now required in the code and have been required in the code since two thousand nine. The state legislature gave us the authority to make that decision, whether to keep them in the code or remove them from the code. It will require two-thirds vote. This came from committee with the residential sprinkler system impact. So you'll have to have thirteen yes votes for this to pass tonight. If it does fail tonight, then I would be prepared for us to take this up with a, an amendment to remove Section R three thirteen if this does not pass in the first reading. That was what was discussed in committee. That's why we're trying to take it that direction at this point. We do have several people that have signed in to speak to this. We would like to hear from you. We'd like for you to come up so you can talk into the microphone because most of us are old and deaf. And it would be helpful if you'd come up first on our list would be Ms. Helen Nichols. And we'd like for you to have at least five minutes. You don't need that long, you don't have to talk that long. And then we remain in the line so that if any commissioners have questions. Just introduce yourself and what you most likely want to do.
Hi, I'm Helen Nichols. I moved back to Trousdale County approximately five years ago and had a new home built. And I have, I have to say, not really researched sprinklers, but as a homeowner, I know that when you add things into the cost, it kind of makes you stand back and think, do I really want to put that much more money into it? And usually when they tell you it's a dollar, it's three or four. You can really get down to it in your estimations of everything, so. You're a county that's growing and a lot of people are moving into this county. I think to get away from restrictions that are so demanding in other places. Like if you go to some places, you can't plan a tree. You can't have a full home. But I know that the sprinklers is a different safety issue and everything, but I just wish that you would consider not passing that, not adding on there the burden. If the people want it in their home, let them decide. That's like telling them they have to do their, have to swap. It's doing gray and red, or they have to. And we have restrictions, I mean, in the lands, like you have to have your homes sometimes. But people buy it like that. But if they want it, let them decide to put those sprinklers in their homes. That's all I have to say. I just wish y'all would consider that.
Any questions, Ms. Nichols, Ms. Baker?
What district are you in?
Um, Ohio two thirty morning, the last one. Just, two thirty morning north. I know Mr. Dickie is one of my officials.
Fifth district, that's the lady.
I'm District Law Austin.
All right, thank you, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Randy Hanks. John, come up.
Good evening, everybody. I don't think it's going to take five minutes, but I've got a piece of property that has well water. And I'm sure if I say slough of water, you guys will know what I'm talking about. It's twenty parts per million. And from all these discussions I've seen on Facebook, I contacted several places in Nashville and no one would even offer a bid on putting a sprinkler system into that house with the water. I did get a bid out of Ohio at twenty-four dollars a square foot, but saying it's still piping. I'm hoping to maintain it with the house if I need to build it up. Secondly, I contacted State Farm Insurance and they said the maximum discount they would give us if we installed the sprinkler system is only seven percent. And that's if every level that is lived in has sprinklers and also sprinklers in the attic. So for the rate that the government's going to be charged to build this house, it'd take sixty years to pay off the water sprinkler system and stay in it. The last thing is we just bought a home from Plating Manufacturing and had it installed three years ago. And we contacted Plating again because my girlfriend's mother, they knew that we needed a house. They said because of HUD code six oh four D and the module of home codes, that not only would they not install it into a new home being built, but if someone did at a later date, it would endanger anyone. So I just wanted you guys to take into consideration and maybe do some research before this is voted on. And if you got any questions, I'm going to say one or nothing.
Mr. Stone?
You said you had slough of water. I grew up around slough of water.
Yes, sir.
What about the other, what pipes do you put in for your drinking? For your hose stuff?
I'll have to put in PVC or CPVC. And I'll just have to watch it. I was told that twenty parts per million will make the plastic harden and that if there's pressure fluctuations, it cracks.
Strong slough of water?
Yes, sir.
I said you got some strong slough of water?
Yes, I do. It actually heats up copper.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I will say that most of our homes and mobile homes are exempt from this. This is deconstruction on residential, simple family duplexes and townhomes. Hopefully, in your situation, and we're certainly not requiring anyone to go back in and retrofit a home in any way, it would be on the new side of the structure. That's what this is like. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next, we have Sean, is it Sean?
Yes.
Gary.
My name is Sean Gary. And I'll just be brief. Pretty much everything's been touched upon. But I would just like to reiterate, I'm one of those guys that happens to spoke about. If you really want to see a change in one in Trousdale County, go back and forth before you move here. And you can really, really see it. That being said, in regards to the cost of having a system put in a new home, which is what I'm about, looking at plans that have you on, I'm getting ready to take on this big venture. I'm concerned about the long-term cost, not so much the initial cost. These folks have done some of this for me readily available. Those things change. My concern is the long-term cost in regards to having these, this particular code covenant, county covenant inspected. Are they going to, is it going to be foam? Is it going to be water? You know, from some folks that were sold on this sprinkler system in these residential homes, they saw a video and it really sent a message home. Most, most, if not all, sprinklers systems are a beautiful commercial application. And that's my experience. But also, if you really want to draw the analogy, is, I feel that this code should come into effect. It's telling new homeowners that you have to put a built-in swimming pool in the backyard because that's really what I see is going to happen with having this installed. The unit does fail. It has to be inspected. It has to be installed. So how long, how often does it get inspected? Who's going to be doing the inspections? And the the infrastructure for having such a, for a man at Slough of Water at Norfolk to have enough water to service his sprinkler in his home, do the tasks have to be changed? And again, maybe these answers, these questions are going to answer already. But I would just like to bring it forth to the commissioner to really look at the long-term cost. I think I'm going to have a hard time with its initial cost, but it's the long-term cost that we have with this. If you can just fill out the analogy of tying in home, I would put a built-in pool in the backyard. Pool has to be serviced, it has to be cared for, it has to be maintained. And that's what has to be going with sprinkler systems as well. Thank you.
Appreciate you, that's a good point. Any questions here? Any question? We appreciate all of y'all that spoke to that. We have commissioners for your consideration tonight for reading ordinance two oh six twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Ordinance to adopt the International Residential Code. As set forth in the ordinance. You will see, these are optional part of the code. The things that the state has allowed us to opt out on would be these sprinklers, also certain of the energy codes, which we've done and took committee that way. So that's our consideration tonight. Mr. Johnson?
I have a question. So we have nineteen commissioners on our court.
We will have thirteen, thirteen in affirmative for this time.
And if this, if you're not agreeing with that statement as it is in the state, would you say no? If you're for keeping the sprinklers in this, would you?
I cannot hear what you said.
Sorry. What I was saying, if you are not for keeping the sprinkler systems required in this new form that you're, you say no. And if you want to leave it as is, you need the sprinklers that's stated on there.
This is presented with the sprinklers in. A yes vote would leave them in the code. A no vote would then ask them if we don't, you know, get thirteen, would, would the motion fail? And we could entertain another motion if we wanted to. But we don't even have a motion to approve yet.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. If you're for it as is in it, yes. If you're not, it's, that's all.
What's that?
Make sure that that's...
I'm sorry, I had to say that one, ma'am, I believe.
I would just like to say that I think maybe in a commissioner and having calls inside and outside of my district, that we need to listen to our county, we need to listen to our people. And that's just, I just think that we need to, you know, stay.
Mr. Walton?
If I understand this right, would you make a motion to adopt this code without the sprinkler system in it?
We need to vote, since it came from committee, with it in it. If we can get a motion to do that, then we'll vote on it. With it in it, if that fails, then we can take up another motion without it.
Haven't we done that before?
If you want to make the motion to take it out now, you can do that. We'll have to vote on that motion to take it out prior to the vote on the actual ordinance.
Has the motion on, ma'am?
We have a motion to remove Section R three thirteen. Mr. Go ahead and leave your session. Have a second. Okay, everybody understand what we're doing here. We have a motion in a second to remove Section R three thirteen from this ordinance.
In essence, I think you're saying presented back as Mr. Edwards presented it.
Can I have a kind of opinion, ma'am?
Presented back as Mr. Edwards presented it the first time, which was without the...
Yes, not the two thousand eighteen codes, less the requirement for sprinklers.
Absolutely, just by the same time.
Yes.
All the rest of it is the same, just without that.
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
I can read that, I'll wait.
Now, we have, it just, I think everybody understands what we're trying to do. Thank you. But Section R three thirteen is a section that pertains to the residential sprinkler. The motion is to remove that from this ordinance to adopt the twenty eighteen hour six. Everybody understand what we're voting on? We're voting on the motion to remove it first. Not the ordinance, the motion to remove it from the ordinance. Okay?
We're all voting aye.
Yes, sir, we are. Any other questions about it? Everybody understand what we're doing? The floor.
You just need to draw it out with the motion. You don't need to argue with this.
No, we just need to draw it. That's, that's correct. That's it. That's it, anybody else?
You want to take that one?
If you want to take it now, we vote aye. Okay? All right, that's close.
Mary Ann Atwood, yes. Marion Baker, yes. Ken Boemaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clarity?
Yes.
Floyd Dickie? Floyd Dickie?
This is you. I think you voted aye.
Yes.
Phil Bergson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Logan Gregory?
Yes.
Landon Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Hart?
Yes.
Wyatt Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson, yes. Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Frederick Johnson?
Yes.
David Dollar?
Yes.
Amy Russell?
Yes.
Gary Wall?
Yes.
Steve Whitaker?
Yes.
We entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two oh six twenty twenty dash twenty-one as amended removing Section R three thirteen. Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion.
Have a motion to approve, second by Mr. Gully. And this will only require a simple majority pass. President, have you read it? Any questions? Everybody understand what we're doing?
No questions.
We're going to grant you a big change in the form of the government.
Yeah. It's all there is now.
Not that we're aware of. But we are required by the state to do at least, least...
I... You wouldn't be allowed to write for that, to draw that out?
I don't think I would do it.
So this one right here, if we want to, if we want to scan or out?
Now, we took them out.
Okay.
Took them out. Now we're voting on it with them out. We're adopting the twenty eighteen with the sprinkler provision removed. That's what R three thirteen is. Is that correct, Sam?
Correct.
All right, any other questions, ma'am? Got a floor, so we're all.
Mary Ann Atwood, yes. Marion Baker, yes. Ken Boemaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton? Gary Clarity?
Yes.
Floyd Dickie? Floyd Dickie? Phil Bergson?
No.
Jerry Ford? Logan Gregory?
Yes.
Linda Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Hart?
Yes.
Wyatt Jewell?
No.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
No.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Widdick?
Yes.
Got sixteen yeses right now.
Does pass first reading. We'll take it up to the next month for the second reading of public hearing. Appreciate everybody. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 203, 2020-18. This is a rezoning ordinance. I'll open the public hearing on 203, 2020-18. This is a rezoning of C 2 to A 1 on Highway 25. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone like to speak to this? Sam, do you have any comments on this?
Everybody knows this is the one that's ongoing. I was with, uh, something there. So.
This was sent forward from a planning commission with no recommendation one way or the other. This is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak to it? Mr. Gully? We have a motion to close the public hearing. Second by Mr. Ford. I'm sorry.
I think it's a, it's still a version. I think you should say a version.
I think that was, I think that was the kind of the gist of the planning commission. They felt, some of them felt like it should remain version. Some felt like if you could honor the request of the petitioner, the changes that are focal. But they knew that it's our decision, so they sent it to us to make that decision. Is that correct, Mr. Crawford? Okay. We do have a motion in the second to approve this. I'm sorry, it's closed public hearing. I called that. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 203, 2020-18. Mr. Gully makes a motion. Ms. Jones makes a second. Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 203, 2020-18. This is the second reading. This will change our zoning. Is that correct, Crawford? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
No.
Okay. Let's do it. Let's do a vote call, please.
Mary Ann Atwood, yes. Mary Ann Baker, no. Ken Bubmaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
No.
Gary Clary?
Yes.
Floyd Dickey? Floyd Dickey?
Yes.
Bill Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Bubba Gregory?
Yes.
Landon Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Harp?
Yes.
Wyatt Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson? Richard Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
No.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Widdick?
Yes.
Good thing he hasn't allowed.
Does pass. Next, for your attention tonight, we have a public hearing on ordinance 204, 2020-19. This is an ordinance to amend the Zonewee Resolution of Travis County, uh, changing traffic of land from aisle one to aisle one. This is to reflect the use that is being permanently used as residential property. Could not find anywhere that it had changed. So this is to try to correct the zoning now. Sam?
I'm going to be trying to make the rest of the neighbors in that area come forward. We can never resell it. It's one acre lots. There's four of them again in that area. So if we can get that area changed, we're matching their use. It's us that had it in that zone.
Everybody understand? Any questions about this, Mr. Nolan? Have a motion to approve. I'm sorry, we have a closed public hearing. Anyone in the public like to speak to this? Anyone in the public like to speak to this? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Nolan? Ms. Jones, that's a second. Um, Ms. Jones. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. No. Okay. A motion to approve ordinance 204, 2020-19. Motion to approve by Mr. Harp. Second by Mr. Clary, please. Anyone else? Any questions? All in favor, let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It is done. Okay. Next, we'll open the public hearing on ordinance 205, 2020-20. This is an ordinance to adopt certain codes of the International Code Council, being the 2018 edition of the International Building Codes. This would include the International Building Code, which covers all building other than residential construction, International Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, the Canic Code, Plumbing Code, Carrying Makings Code, Existing Building Code, and the Energy Conservation Code, with the exception of keeping residential construction on the 2009 edition. Also, the Accessibility Code, referenced as ICC, page 117. The 2017 edition of it is the most current edition of it. Uh, this passed through committee on 9/15. Uh, this is a public hearing on this in the second reading. Passed first reading with us last month. Any questions on this? Okay. Public comments? Anyone in the public like to make a comment or question on this? Any comments from the public on this? Seeing none? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Clary, make that motion. Ms. Russell makes a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do close the public hearing. We would have for your consideration ordinance 205, 2020-20 to adopt the International Building Codes. This will take effect, I believe it says, it's ninety days in the document. Ninety days in the second reading tonight. This will affect, affect ninety days from tonight. Mr. Ford? Have a motion to approve. Ms. Baker, that's a second. Any further questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does pass. Thank you. Next, we'll get into budget amendments. Uh, several budget amendments. First of all, I believe we have to take individually. And then we can lump the last ones that are just inter fund transfers together, and so does our. First one is BA 101, oh seven for CAG Senior Center. This is fifteen thousand dollars for Cares Act, grant funding, and put it into Senior Center, other supplies and materials. It's receiving the money from the grants and putting it in line item category. Ms. Jones? Motion to approve. Ms. Clary, second. We have a motion and a second to approve this. I think we need roll call of this. No? Okay. Voice vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does carry. Next is BA 141, zero five FBHS position. It's moving, uh, general purpose school fund, unsigned fund balance of sixty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. And this is to cover a health services officer and maintenance person. Uh, this is moving money out of their, uh, fund balance, unsigned fund balance. This was approved by the Board of Education, I believe, at their October fifteenth meeting. Is that correct?
September.
September?
September.
September. Okay. And it was approved by Budget and Finance Committee. Any questions about this? Ms. Ford? Have a motion to approve. Second by Mr. Gully. Any other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. This is about third. Moving this management fund balance, so we're going to need to roll call. What would I do with that?
Mary Ann Atwood, yes. Mary Ann Baker, yes. Ken Bubmaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clary?
Yes.
Floyd Dickey?
Yes.
Bill Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford? Bubba Gregory?
Yes.
Landon Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Harp?
Yes.
Wyatt Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Widdick?
Does pass. Okay. Next is BA 141. This is admitting the general purpose school fund, six hundred and ninety dollars, uh, going into the office of principal for other supply of materials. This is just a foster fund where they can save some money in and then you can assign it to a category to, uh, P A D. Mr. Harp? Motion to approve by Mr. Harp. Second by Ms. Russell. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, men and women.
Mary Ann Atwood, yes. Mary Ann Baker, yes. Ken Bubmaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clary?
Yes.
Floyd Dickey?
Yes.
Bill Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Bubba Gregory?
Yes.
Landon Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Harp?
Yes.
Wyatt Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Widdick?
It does pass. Next is BA 141, CNF, is, uh, amend the general purpose school fund, taking four thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars out of their unsigned fund balance, putting it into the office of principal of buildings. This was just, uh, premiums on the insurance came in higher than they anticipated. We need to move those funds to be able to pay the insurance premiums. Is that correct, all in favor?
Yes, it's just testing wristband movement. It's hollow, yes.
Just was approved by the school board and by the Budget and Finance Committee. Ms. Ford, make a motion to the second. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call. Please. Please.
Mary Ann Atwood, yes. Mary Ann Baker, yes. Ken Bubmaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton?
Yes.
Gary Clary?
Yes.
Floyd Dickey?
Floyd?
Yes.
Bill Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Ford?
Yes.
Bubba Gregory?
Yes.
Landon Dudley?
Yes.
Richard Harp?
Yes.
Wyatt Jewell?
Yes.
Linda Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Jones?
Yes.
David Noller?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Widdick?
Does pass. Next are six budget amendments that are all inter fund transfers, moving money from one line to another. We can take these all together, or we can pull anyone else in. So which, Ms. Jackson?
I would guess.
Make a motion to, to them all. Second by Ms. Clary. And we have a motion to approve all of these. That will be budget amendment inter fund transfer 2021, 141, oh three, oh four, oh six, oh seven, oh eight, and eleven. These are all pertaining to the schools, uh, various different line item categories. Any questions on this? Any of this? Make a motion, second. We can approve these by all of us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. That is done. Pass. Take care of all of our fund balances or all of our budget amendments, or budget amendments. Next, moving into the note reads. We have four documents for your approval tonight. One is Lays Up Angel with the State Tennessee District Ranch. C A Card with four citic. Anita Solomon and King of Stafford, both with S and S motives. Ms. Gully? Motion to approve all? Motion to approve all four. Second by Ms. Clary. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Come, any other business commissioners? Any commissioners? Larry, do you have any other business we didn't cover?
No, sir.
Okay. Going to the far of our agenda, the public comment. Any of the public feels a desire to make a comment? We would love to entertain, entertain you if you would like to make any sort of comment. Ms. Bass?
We do, please, Phil. The person that's having is, we're trying to watch the commission meetings. Basically, I'm getting the guy to podcast from the house. We got the clock in here, the reporter. But is there anything that can be done to improve the audio? Because for whatever reason, Mr. Tanger, uh, we can hear it very clearly. And sometimes we can hear yourself clearly. But most of the pitchers, we can't even hear what this thing.
That, that is being addressed by the communications meeting. We actually have meetings coming up this month or the next few weeks to make this some equipment suppliers to get the recommendation. So what we can do, this is something that we've been working on for well over a year. And hopefully, we're, we're coming to some, some conclusion on this. Clary, do you have anything to add on that?[1628.78]
Actually, I have a meeting uh this Thursday with, sorry about that. With a gentleman who's often helped us come up with specs for the doing the E A system here and also. Looking at doing a better screening system so we can use YouTube Live or something like that. So that is coming up this Thursday. Hopefully, we are moving something that will capture more of the commission's comments and also we're looking to do, or we have looked at consistently. For people who have hearing issues that are attending the meeting, they can have a little earbud that they'll be able to wear while they're here in the. In the chambers to listen to the commission meetings. So it is something we're trying to address. It's just trying to get some of this stuff done. We haven't been able to meet to get it done due to various conflicts for schedules and COVID. It's just been an issue trying to get it scheduled. We are working on that, trying to improve uh for people watching at home and then also when people tend to hear loud and they have hearing issues, so they can uh. Be able to have an earbud and be able to hear.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do do people seem to be able to hear better here in the courthouse or the community center? Do you know?
They're better able to hear you when you use a microphone. That's, I mean, that's, you just heard him. They can't hear you here. And then he said he can't hear at the house either. So if you're not around a microphone. Unless you speak very loudly, my microphones over here are not going to pick you up. I would have to have several microphones throughout here where we have spaced out. So. Right now, the issue, we can pass around a microphone and then you can use it then if somebody wants to speak, you recognize passing around the microphone. That's the quickest fix right now. However. What we're looking to do is put various microphones throughout the desk here to capture anybody speaking and that would. You can use that audio from the P A system here, run the audio out from the P A system, run it into your camera and have it provide the audio from your camera system.
Well, I understand what you're trying to do, but with what we have currently, where do people seem to under, where do they seem to hear better here or the courthouse or the community center? Do you know? With the current system that we have, is what I'm asking.
I get complaints both ways, so I can't tell you exactly. I can't tell you. It depends on what your systems are. Like I can set it on. The audio I capture from the cam porter, it posts on YouTube and then link that to the camera's website has better audio than must be picked up on Facebook. And that's just due down to microphones and one of them's a streaming through a phone and the other's through a six hundred dollar cam porter. So it picks up better. So I would advise if anyone wants to go back and watch, try going to the camera's website and linking to YouTube video because it actually has better audio quality than what I'm streaming live through Facebook.
So does that that depend on what you use, depending on whether or not you're here or over there?
If you're closer to the microphone, it's gonna pick you up better.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, do you have more complaints from people not being able to hear here in the courthouse? Or do you have more complaints about people not being able to hear over in the community center? I understand logistics are being able to talk into a microphone and hear.
Okay, well.
I can say this, what do, what do people seem to? Do you hear complaints from people in the uh in the general public? Do they seem to be able to hear better? And if you're broadcasting from the community center?
They can't hear whether you're here or if you're there. If you're not having a microphone, they can't hear you. That is the problem, whether they're in public or here.
That that here is even like.
I'm just saying that, if you can let's like. Be be, okay. Be, sign. So it's assigned?
I would say that this is being worked on, can look at, will be addressed. We have to have sound system. We have to have boundary lighting problems. We have people in here that are speaking in whisper. We have people in here that are hearing impaired. We have people at home that are hearing impaired. This is something that is on all our plates to try to rectify, but you can't step to things and make it happen tomorrow. The problem we have is commissioners here that most need to use a microphone or use two. Some of them, like me, are loudmouths and we still use one. But there's, it's just hard sometimes to hear people. We're looking at trying to to correct that. Mr. Wong, make a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn.
On what's there to say in this? I remember what you're saying, I think.
Motion made.
If everybody, but all of my students, if you could hear better.
Uh, I'll have to look at it and see.